I think so.
Just a decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just a decision.
We can even get on this decision.
Okay. Hopefully that's.
Good.
I'm not sure about.
The first part of the litigation process.
Definitely.
Interesting.
Right? Yeah. I mean. A special meeting.
Right, right?
What time?
Okay, let me know when we're ready to resume.
Oh, with the TVD get on and.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
No, it's this.
No pressure.
Showing up there usually does. Is it not connected?
Yeah.
We're missing.
Plug in, there's always some little thing like that. And my husband was watching sumo wrestling when I left. Like legit sumo wrestling.
Reporting in progress.
Okay, we are back from closed session. And just to report that we had a discussion in closed session and a decision was unanimously decided that we will have a special meeting on April ninth at six thirty and it will be just a closed session. So it will be notified. There will be a seventy-two hour notification and all, but we will basically be meeting back here at seven, uh, six thirty on April ninth, which is a Tuesday. So that was the decision in our closed session. Okay, let's move on then. We are now on our moment of silence in memory of Blue Lake resident Larry Pike. And we'll start that now. All right, we'll move on and to item seven. Public comment time. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment?
I just wondered if you could say a few words about Larry Pike, like who he was?
Okay, well Larry lived on the corner of, uh, across from the fire department and his wife was the bus driver for Blue Lake School for many, many years. She probably drove Mandy Mager and she drove my kids back and forth. Um, he was quite an old car aficionado and there was a lovely memorial for him that occurred a couple of weekends ago. I went to it. It was very, very nice. Um, very well attended as well, brought out a lot of people that knew him. So he's a long time Blue Laker. Okay, anyone for public comment? Becky, did you want to speak? Okay, all right, thank you. Um, we'll move on then to item eight, Blue Lake Commissioner Applications Review and Appointments. Now, I was looking through this and I came up with, there's one vacancy for the Public Safety Commission and there's one person applying. And I'm not sure how to pronounce that name, S C E H, Shay. Then there's one, there's one vacancy for the Economic Development Commission and there's one person applying for that. Who said, I mean, I had to go back because I couldn't believe this. There's one vacancy for the Arts and Heritage Commission and there's one person wanting that, Green. And then there's two vacancies for Park and Recreation and there's two people for that, Henry and Furer.
Dang.
Furer. And then there's one for the Public Safety and that, there's one person, Nickerson. So it's.
There's actually two openings on Arts and Heritage.
So what? Oh, no.
There's two openings for Arts and Heritage, so this, this will just make it one.
Well, darn, it was gonna work out so nice. To being a perfect world. Because I kept going back and back and thought, no, this has never happened where it's been so perfectly set up in. It has. Okay. So anyway, that leaves us with one vacancy. Okay.
Seal.
Sorry. Anyway, um, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the council, is ask if there's anyone here that has applied for these positions that would like to speak on them first. Um, we've read your resumes and very happy to see such qualified people coming forward. Um, so, um, you, you were the Mr. Shay?
Yeah.
Did I pronounce it? You're Mr. Shay. Jason, okay, and.
Up to the microphone.
Up to the microphone. We're very formal here. No, um, just give us.
Uh, there's two hands up there on Zoom.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't opened it to public. I haven't opened this up to public comment at the moment. What I'm doing is asking the applicants that are here if they would like to speak.
There you go.
Yeah, mute all.
There you go. Okay.
So are they saying that they can't hear us though? Is that the problem? Sorry. Uno momento, por favor.
Technical difficulties.
Can we just ask them if they can hear us or not? Is that a possibility?
Can you hear us up there?
All sorts of allergies.
Oh, but you can't. Okay, so Jean can hear us.
Can you hear us now? I am, too. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but we're gonna mute you guys now.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Jason Shay would like a seat at the Planning Commission. After tonight, he may wonder.
I'm just sharing a little about myself. Yeah. Um, so my name is Jason Shay. I, uh, I live at the end of the street here, um, next to the school. Got three kids that are teenagers. My son was the one who was recently hit by, on the, on the bridge. He's doing, he's doing okay, so, um, but yeah, that's my family. I've been living here for thirteen years. Um, I pastor two churches in Arcata, uh, so I've been doing that for seventeen years with my wife and I have a, um, a general contracting license and it's, it's inactive, which doesn't mean it's not good. It just means that I'm not currently using it. So I have a background in doing a lot of residential construction, um, primarily with actually preschools. I don't know how I like fell into that, but people would buy houses and they would renovate, they want them renovated for a preschool, so we would do a bunch of stuff. Um, so I've worked for a lot of different contractors in the area. Um, I have a real heart for this community and, um, I really believe in its purpose and mission and making it a really good, safe place for people. So any specific questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, council person?
Nope, no.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm glad your son is on the men.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, is Jacob Hussin here?
No, the only other person here is Chris.
Yeah.
Oh.
Come on up, Chris.
Okay. Christopher Furer, Fire, okay, Fire. Okay.
Uh, I work here at the Resource Center with Molly. Um, I've been feeding food to secure folks and houses populations for about two years here in Blue Lake. Uh, live right around the corner by the fire station and I love Blue Lake. I just want to help represent.
Some.
Any questions? Short, sweet?
Short, sweet on the background and recognition.
I do, yes. Parts and Rec.
And you worked as a park attendant with the city of Albuquerque? Is that what, is that where you're from originally?
Uh, no, I was not originally twenty-eight years ago. This is a good chunk of it.
Uh huh, okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Feeling us to serve.
All right.
So, and I don't think anyone else is here.
Okay.
Can we lump some this?
We do have.
Oh, is there something?
Yeah. No, not, not from here.
Uh huh.
I mean, not for this.
Well, possibly. I could open it up to public.
No, no, she was asking if there was another candidate.
Oh, okay, I see. All right.
But yes, now public comment.
Yeah, I was gonna open it up to public comment since we have listened to the, um, applicants that have taken their time to come here and we thank you for that. Is there any public comment on this item? Lori Ponte?
So, the, very common. I don't know if there's anything that could be done about that, including the, the people that came to the podium yet.
I don't know.
Thank you for that information. We're doing the best.
Do we have a new system?
No, no.
Okay. I don't know.
Yeah, it's a good question. All right.
Well, thank you for that information. We're not sure how to fix that.
Okay.
Are there any plugins or any, anything, any, we can wiggle to see if there's anything that's loose, any loose connections, any?
And, what anybody is saying?
Well, we can hear you very clearly.
Yeah, I don't know.
We don't know what the problem is and we can't fix it.
Yeah, yeah. Right. Um. I'm gonna ask Justin if he has any idea.
That's, that thing, I, I need to move me over that.
Oh, okay. Is?
Okay, now we can get better.
Okay.
She was able to hear somebody else who's on Zoom, but she can't hear the people in the room, I think, is what's happening. Yeah.
Yeah. It's just the equipment that we have right now, it sounds like, because.
Did we change? Sorry, we don't know how to fix it.
Okay, let's come back to council for a decision on applicants.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Come on down.
Yeah.
Nice and warm in here. Um, so we do have applicants here, um, and we can do this together.
Group?
As a group. I would think we need to.
Yeah.
Mention their names specifically and where they're going, so, you know, that we have to keep that kind of straight, so.
So I'm gonna start.
All right.
I move that we accept Jason Shay for the Planning Commission. Jacob Hussin for the EDC. Sherry Green for Arts and Heritage. Jan Henry for Parks and Rec. And Chris Fire for the Parks and Rec as well.
And then.
And Ed Nickerson.
Yes.
Thank you. There's one for the Safety Commissions.
Okay, nicely done.
That's all.
I will second.
Okay, motion to appoint the above-mentioned folks to our various commissions was made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Schull. Is there any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and one absent.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
And thank you. Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate people serving on commissions. I started out as eight years in the Park and Rec Commission, so it's how you can start and end up here, maybe.
So you're signed up for life.
Never know.
All right.
It's a long time ago. All righty, we're good. Um, we are now moving on to item nine. We're going to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number five four four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake modifying section one three point oh eight point zero six zero of chapter thirteen point oh eight of title thirteen of the Blue Lake Municipal Code regarding customer deposits. So to give you some background information, the city council directed staff to prepare an amendment to the city's water regulations allowing the return of water deposits based upon a demonstrated ability to make on-time payments for a period of two years. In order to amend the water regulations, the city must adopt a new ordinance that amends the current municipal code language. Presented is the proposed amending ordinance along with the proposed policy language. Council will introduce the ordinance and conduct the first reading. The second reading will play, place at the April twenty-third meeting and the language will enter effect thirty days from the date of adoption. And from what I understand, this has been a revolving account that's pretty much been there all these years. And so it's something I know we've talked about before. Um, a person that just moved here about two years ago, Linda Prince brought this to my attention and I brought it up and I'm glad to see it happening so quickly. I called her, but she's in San Francisco right now, but she was very happy to hear that it was moving forward.
And just for some clarifying information, um, we did run this by our, uh, our water, um, our software company and they asked that we add some clarifying language. Um, it's pretty simple and straightforward, so since this is the first reading, um, we can propose an amendment, excuse me, to the language. Sorry.
And this would go, this would go in the ordinance in one of the where, whereas's, as they call them?
Yeah, it's just clarified on the issue of when the account is closed.
So what section is that?
So it's. It's under number one. Um, we're proposing to add where it says the date on which the account is closed. Um, we're proposing to add the month following the date on which the account is closed, because that's how our billing process works, so.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm confused.
Finding that.
Where?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the actual policy itself.
Oh, you're on exhibit A. Okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
Whereas it was.
All right.
Exhibit A.
So an amount equal. An amount equal to two and a quarter times the monthly. The monthly base rate, which is called MBR, for water service in effect at the time of the application, rounded off to the nearest dollar refundable at the earlier of the date on which the account is closed or after two years of consecutive on-time payments.
Yeah.
So where?
Says the date on which the account is closed, we need to add the month following the date on which the account is closed.
Uh, refundable at the, at the earlier of the date. Now, what does that mean?
The date, at the, the month following the date on which the account is closed. It's just how our billing.
At the month?
On.
Following?
The month following.
So earlier is not in here.
Refundable at the earlier of.
What does that mean?
Yeah, that just, that doesn't work.
Refundable, so take out at the earlier, it's refundable, the month following the date on which the account is closed.
Uh huh.
Sorry.
The month. Following the date. Okay.
That's.
That makes sense now.
So that's what we're proposing to make it consistent with how our billing system actually operates.
Okay, all righty, this is very exciting. Any other corrections, changes? Any questions from city council about this issue? All right, open it up to the public. It is.
Very exciting.
Is there anyone, um, in the public that would like to discuss the idea, the ordinance that we are proposing to modify our law concerning our customer deposits?
Before we go to public?
Yes.
So let's say I, I'm a really good customer for two years and then I get my deposit back and then I don't pay my water for three months.
That's a risk the city takes.
Okay.
And then you'll just go into our system for collections.
So will I have to repay, besides the fact that I've used water for three months, will I have to repay my?
Only if you get shut up and you have to reestablish your account.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And the thirty-dollar application fee, that's everyone that wants their refund needs to get the city thirty dollars?
No, if that's part of the application for water service, so that's part of the non-refundable part of the deposit.
Oh.
That's just our.
And they won't get that refunded, I understand. Thank you.
If you paid two hundred thirty-dollar deposit, you'll only get two hundred back.
Right.
Mm hmm.
All right, so if I paid thirty-five dollars.
You get five bucks.
I'm getting five dollars back.
Yeah.
Because that's what I paid forty, forty-five years ago.
Nineteen, in the nineteen hundreds when you cut your water.
Yeah. So this ordinance does not help me in any way. Let's still let people know. Uh, I see a hand, um.
Julie.
Julie, Christie?
Hey, everyone, how, how's that volume on my side?
Good. Can you hear us?
No, no, this is the first time I've.
Sorry.
City's lighting for then, uh, during. Uh, in the past, we've had this issue and it revolves around the vote. First needed to unmute in the beginning, so there was no public participation during public moments. Those are most would need it. Um, so I mostly emphasize the chair would go back to allow that if it will be it. Everyone say right now on the dog participation, you guys, we should have these right now, just putting it on. Um, but also feel this part you guys got in the past, I've had so, I've been asked, you guys prefer either one or?
And that's.
Commenting on the agenda item?
They need to be commenting on this agenda. Uh, did you want to make a comment about the agenda item that we're now on, which is concerning the deposit of our water, uh, fund to the people?
I understood she was trying to say that she wasn't able to make a public comment earlier because the system wasn't working, so she was making her general comment.
Yes, that's what I heard.
That's what I heard too.
So I don't think she has any.
Right, any other public comment?
Okay.
On this agenda item? All right, we'll, we'll come back to council for, um.
Do we actually need to read it?
The first reading by ordinance only is usually what we say, by title only is what we say, so that I don't have to read the whole thing. So the motions should say that you will, you are introducing and conducting the first reading of ordinance number five forty-four by title only.
It's discussion only, so we don't have to take, make a motion on it?
Um, it'll go for its second, um, it'll go for its second reading.
Which is the action, okay.
That probably should have said action at the end there.
Right, with the changes.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, good point. With changes.
So we're just directing staff to make the changes and bring it back?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Well, then we won't have our first reading tonight then.
You did, yeah. You can make adjustments at your first reading.
Okay, so then we do need a motion for a first reading, uh, of an ordinance number five four four by title only with the changes noted.
Aye, so move.
Second. Motion made by Elise Stefani, seconded by Elizabeth McKay, to have the first reading of ordinance number five forty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake modifying section one three point zero eight point one zero six zero, excuse me, of chapter thirteen point zero eight of title thirteen of the Blue Lake Municipal Code regarding customer deposits. And this being an ordinance, we need a roll call vote. Yes.
May potential.
Yes.
Council member McKay?
Yes.
Council member Stefani?
Yes.
Council member Andrew.
Present in spirit, maybe.
Okay, it passes unanimously.
Almost.
Except for one absent person.
You're right.
Okay, very good. So our second reading and adoption will be at our next meeting and then thirty days from that will be when our staff is gonna have to get busy. Yes, there'll be people coming, wanting their deposits back. All right, we are on page two. Item ten, resolution number one two two seven. Resolution of the city of Blue Lake designating the city manager as the authorized representative for the submission of an application for funding to the State Water Resources Control Board for its direct O and M program and authorizing the city manager to execute and submit all required documents, assurances, certifications, applications as required by the program, and to execute all required financial agreements and any amendments there too. So the city has been identified as a potential recipient of temporary direct operation and maintenance fund, that's O and M, funding through the State Water Resource Control Board. The city has been encouraged to submit an application for funding. The attached resolution authorizes the city manager to execute the required documents and funding agreements. Staff recommends submitting a request for funding to purchase and install electronic water meters. This project would replace outdated and aging infrastructure and would reduce operational costs and overhead. The state program manager has reviewed this project concept and has encouraged the city to apply for funding to complete the project. We are in the process of revising a scope of work to meet the funding guidelines and staff is requesting authorization to submit for funding as identified in the attached resolution. Did you want to add anything to this? Manager maker?
Sure, just so really quickly, this is a brand-new program through, uh, State Water Resources Control Board. Um, the city is one of only thirty that was chosen to participate in, um, they're calling it the group one, um, uh, group, um, and I, it's, as a new program, it's really a little bit, um, it's a little bit, uh, undefined at this moment. We, um, we actually were told we're a little bit of, um, maybe like guinea pigs and so we're being encouraged to submit, um, for possibly up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, one of the project, the intent of this project is to, to look at improvements that would hopefully in the future translate to lower costs, um, to the rate payer because we're reducing our operation and maintenance costs. Um, as a small water, uh, system, you know, we have, we have very few rate payers to pass off very high-cost items and infrastructure. So the state is trying to make investments into infrastructure that would take some of that burden off of the rate payer for future. Um, one of the areas that we are really struggling with right now is we have a lot of really old water meters. Um, we have identified, um, changing our water meters out to, uh, telemetry-based system as kind of a high priority. Right now, we have a staff member that, um, it takes Jacob about four to five days every month to walk around the city and read every single water meter. Um, it's, it's difficult because a lot of these meter boxes are old. Um, this time of year, we start getting gophers, they fill them up with dirt, some people park on top of them, um, just a lot of problems associated with old infrastructure. It also doesn't give us the capacity to really capture in real time what's happening with these water systems. So if someone has a leak in their system, we don't capture it until we do the monthly read. With this new system, um, we can be looking at real-time data and seeing how people's systems are reacting, so we can actually set thresholds, um, for us to be notified if someone's system starts to kind of bench up in a way that's a little bit of, of an anomaly, um, versus what they, their, kind of their regular use is. So it's a great. So it's a great, um, it's a great project, it's something that, uh, would really increase um, our operational capacity, reduce operational costs, um, and it's a pretty high cost item, it's about, it's probably close to two hundred thousand dollars to change out all the meters in the city. So, um, I think it's a really good use of this, um, program and it's the top project that staff has identified and it seems to fit really well with their guidelines, so, um, so that's our, our staff recommendation for the funding. Um, it may be that we can apply for this plus maybe another project, um, they also said we could may possibly look at equipment. Um, one of the things that we have right now is a kind of an old and failing backhoe, um, those are really high cost items, they can replace equipment. Um, that could be another item that, um, would just, um, you know, start ticking off some of the things on our capital improvement plan, so, um, we're really excited, you know, it's not necessarily the best place to be in that you're getting chosen because you have a high rate to median household income. Um, but it's also an opportunity to make some large scale improvements to the system.
There we go, so of the other thirty cities, do you know, are they, are they small cities also or?
You know, I, it, I didn't see the list of cities, but I'm assuming so, you know, it's just, it's really burdensome when you have, you know, these are big cost items, I mean, our water tanks are two million dollars, you know, everything is hundreds of thousands of dollars and you try to pass that off to, you know, six hundred rate payers, you know, that, that cost burden is really high. And we have, you know, our median household income, depending on which way you look at it, kind of fluctuates for each kind of funding source, so, um.
Sounds like a very good grant if we get it, um.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from council, are we opening up to public? Is there any discussion from public on this item? Julie? Okay.
Yeah, it would be similar, it runs off a telemetry system.
I see. Julie, we, we can hear you if you speak a little louder, please.
Yeah, we're playing mute, silent, and forth, um, sorry about that. Uh, I was just curious, and it's such a, um, staff discretion, but when I was reviewing the water force um, application process, which is very, like, I was taking the hands of the public machine, uh, I thought it was trailers like, so we can move on to, to categories, you know, called, you know, uh, uh, they just have people like I and eating city and the whole, um, and water system that I burning. And here's the, there's two, they, like, they, you know, so that where these two separate, um, ways to apply, it's very good for all the cities. And, um, I guess there was a lot of stuff in here that, um, part of it helped lower water bill back, I don't know, that's something, uh, the, you're so bad, you guys. Uh, but I was going to clear it up, so in English, you know, again, so we still have our answers, but I'm curious, do you know what the, uh, we saw that?
Thank you, I don't believe we can use this fund for lowering people's water rates, is that correct?
There, there's a little bit of flexibility, um, in that the, we're in the group, we're designated as group one, it's not a choice to flip between the two. Um, and so the, the goal of this is to, um, bring down your operation and maintenance costs. Like I said, that would then translate later on to lowering rates because you've been making those capital improvement uh, in, investments which translate ultimately to hopefully a lower cost rate over the long term.
Thank you. Alright, um, so it looks like we need to adopt resolution one two two seven and have the mayor sign it.
So moved.
Second, motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to adopt resolution number one two two seven and have the mayor sign it, is there any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, go get it. Alrighty, we are moving on to item eleven. Revised staff updates to the city's Blue Lake visioning document and provide recommendations and or directions for further analysis and discussion. In nineteen ninety-seven, some of us were around and the city of Blue Lake underwent a process to complete a Blue Lake community visioning and strategic plan. This effort was supported by USDA who provided funding and resources to conduct community outreach, scoping, and the final completion of a guiding document for the economic revitalization of the city. As work has progressed over the years, the city is seeing that several projects identified in the plan have either been completed are in the process of being completed, have been modified, or may no longer be applicable. Staff has reviewed the document and has updated the core themes identified as focused projects and is bringing it back to council for further review and direction. The updated document is also being reviewed by the city's commissions and we are soliciting their input and guidance for additional recommendations. The core themes of the plan are still very reflective of the city's continued efforts and focus and staff believes that the documents are still highly relevant and valuable. And as a person who was a part of this, um, centuries ago, I was, I was really, yes, it's really only been decades. Um, I was really, well, it was nostalgic to look back, especially at some of the names of people, for instance, Ron Brunson that have passed on to greener pastures, um, but then some people like Cash Bujo, myself, my husband, um, you know, there's still some of us still hanging around. Um, so I think what we determined, I mean, we never thought that we would be looking at this, you know, so many years later, but it's great that we are. Um, Mandy, did you wanna, now you were living in Blue Lake at the time, but I think at the time you were probably.
Always lived in Blue Lake.
I know, but you were in college and you had no idea that you were gonna be part of.
Yeah, I think I was just graduating from college.
Yeah, interesting.
Yes, I mean, you know, we've been doing a lot of work over the last, um, six years or so, um, to, to look at economic revitalization of the community, um, and I think, I think this plan, even though it came from nineteen ninety-seven, I think it's, um, it's very reflective of kind of a continuum of thought and effort that the city has been exerting um, to kind of get to the point where we are today, and I think a lot of the, um, the vision themes and focus areas are still very, um, still very current. There are some items that I think, you know, immediately kind of fall off the list, some things, like I said, some things have been changed, some things are um, still relevant, maybe some things have, you know, kind of fallen or lost, um, a priority perspective. Um, but I still think that there's a lot of value to this, and so, uh, we've been going through this, um, with our team to, you know, to look at how this vision is reflective of, you know, how, what we're working on currently and kind of what some of our focus strategies are, and I wanted to bring it back. Um, we took a first shot at kind of updating those kind of core themes and to give some information on kind of where we are, um, what some of our recommendations are as far as prioritization of specific, um, actions, um, but ultimately, um, I think it's a good way for us also to kind of just, you know, focus efforts and also track efforts. And it's exciting, um, as, you know, as someone, you know, who's grown up in Blue Lake to see that, you know, in nineteen ninety-seven, there was a lot of thought put into this, um, you know, I'm a timber kid, my, you know, my family's, my dad's a, you know, old growth timber faller, I, I grew up in the timber industry and I recognize and have very um, vivid memories and feelings about how our community transitioned um, from a timber town into, you know, kind of where we're going these days, and it was a very hard process. Um, there was a lot of, a lot of feeling attached to it, there was a lot of heartache attached to it. Um, and it, it did change our community, um, pretty abruptly, honestly. Um, and so I really appreciate the fact that there were these people that came together to really try and figure this out, to, to really look at what, what are we gonna do next if we are not timber anymore, what are we? Um, they recognized the value of the city, um, they recognized that it's important to have an economic foundation to continue to be a city. And I think, um, having that as kind of a core value, thinking about what investment we make and what we focus on to make sure that our city is solvent, um, for generations is, um, is really reflective of what's in this document, and I really appreciate it, and I'm excited to be able to, you know, see that these projects that were identified, a lot of them are, are coming to fruition, and, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a plan from nineteen ninety-seven, but projects take a long time, and, you know, some projects are easy, some projects take a long time, and so even looking at like the town square, we're going to construction on the town square, that was identified in this plan to focus on a town square for the community, um, and, and that's coming, you know, that's, we have one now and it's going to construction in probably a month and a half, um, to be finalized, so I think that's really exciting. Um, the focus on recreation, um, I think is a very forward-thinking thought and, um, vision from nineteen ninety-seven to see where we are today, so, um, yeah, so I think there's some things that are still highly relevant, we still need to focus on our downtown. Um, still trying to bring back some services, um, but I think ultimately it's nice to have kind of a guiding document, and it's a good opportunity to, um, like I said, bring it up, back out to the community, update it, um, field test it, um, I, I am excited to have the commissions work with this document as well, because I think it's really helpful for them to be able to have something tangible and to see where they fit within, um, each one of these core themes has a space for each of those commissions to work within, so I think that's really valuable because the commissioners give a lot of their time and make a lot of effort, and so it's, it's great to be able to use them for something that, you know, has some real translatable value. So tonight, we're not asking, uh, for you guys to start this process over to really dig deep into this, we're really just asking for you to, um, take this, give us a little bit of feedback and provide us with some direction on how you'd like us to continue. Um, I know, uh, Lisa Hoover had submitted a letter about, um, engaging the community, and I think that's great, um, I don't think, I don't think we're quite there yet, I'd like to be able to work this through the commissions first and then be able to take what the commissions are working on to be able to present as well to the community. Um, but I think there's a space for the community as well, um, so that's kind of where we are today.
And, and along with that, I'd like to say that in nineteen ninety-seven, we only had two commissions. We had a planning commission and we had a park and rec commission. And now we have an economic development commission, we have a public safety commission, and we have an arts and heritage commission, so I welcome the idea of having a community town hall on this subject, but I would like some input from those commissions because we have such a wealth of knowledge in those commissions now and adding the, the three that we have now that we didn't have back then, um, is just gonna give us a much fuller picture, and I just, I, I always, I always just, I'm so thankful for people that are on our commissions and I think that they deserve the respect of having a good look at it first too before it comes to the community with their ideas, um, but.
Yeah, I can see it, um, kind of, like a, at the Grange where there's tables set up where like the different categories.
Exactly what it was like, it was at the Grange and there were tables set up and there were captains and there was a facilit, there were, was at least one facilitator, so, yeah.
And the public comes in, just kind of like they did at the, uh, at the casino the other night about the trails, yeah, so for input, physical input, and I know Susan did that at the park for the, for the city square when she was here. Um, yeah, I, that would be a really good way to get it organized, you know, with everybody and then have people come in and give their ideas, for sure.
Sure. Great.
I, I have a little bit of a concern, um, I feel like we've got an awful lot going on and, um, and I wonder how much staff time it's, you know, we wanted to vote to a project like this, because I mean, absolutely, I think the, the commissions and the, and the, uh, public should be involved. I don't know if there's anybody available currently who might help to facilitate something like that. Um, but we might look into that, I mean, I imagine that, um, that our city staffs, you know, has already spent a fair bit of time on this, and I'm, I think we should, you know, really consider that investment, that time investment um, before we decide when or how we wanna move forward with this. I think we hear a lot about how staff is stretched really thin, and so I don't want to stretch staff thinner for a project, um, you know, when we have so many things going on and we're about to go to construction on a few different items and, you know, we've been trying to get some, some things wrapped up and, and done, so I'd like to just consider it from that standpoint.
Does staff see this as being an, uh, extra burden in terms of staff time, I mean, if it can be presented at the next commissions, you know, much the same way that we have it?
Yeah, I think, you know, I took some time to, um, to do the update, that was probably the, the biggest part of, and it wasn't even really that big, um, I don't feel, I don't think it's a, I appreciate that, thinking about, um, staff resources and time, um, because we do have a lot on our plate. But I also feel like this is a really important, um, plan, and one of the things that I really appreciate about this plan, excuse me, is that it, it provides a bit of cover, and I think I've said this before, I feel like it provides a bit of cover for myself and for other staff who are working on projects to, to remove the idea that the projects that we're working on are, are just my idea or something that's, um, that I'm pushing forward, and there's been some of that commentary in the community and that, you know, before that, you know, these are, that I have an agenda for, you know, taking the city to a certain direction. And so what I really appreciate about this plan is that the projects that we're working on are reflective of what was identified in nineteen ninety-seven, so it's not, it's not my agenda, it's really staff implementing the vision that the community had. And like I said, a lot of these projects take a really long time to get to this point, um, when you're looking at, you know, whether it's acquiring properties or it's zoning or it's grants, it's investment, um, passion fusion, um, just having capacity, um, to, to take a project forward, so I feel in that respect that it's pretty important, I've talked with Gary Reese quite a bit, our city planner. He feels kind of the same way, he was, um, he's pretty excited to take this to the planning commission as well, to get the planning commission's, um, kind of feedback, because I think that was one thing that the, the planning commission had struggled with initially with some of the projects, just how projects started really moving quickly, um, as we started rezoning and we started getting interest and we started picking up traction, um, there was, you know, a bit of a hesitancy of like, wow, this is really starting to happen fast. Um, and that's what happens when you have a good plan and things start to fall in place, things do start to move quickly. Um, so having, I think it would be helpful to the planning commission, especially to be able to fall back on this, take some time with it um, and engage with it a bit so that everyone has kind of a comfort level. Um, I don't necessarily think this has to be a fast process, it's been sitting there since nineteen ninety-seven.
Right.
Um, it's not gonna hurt us to go slow with it and, and honestly, I would, we would have to go a little bit slow with it anyways, just with, you know, like, like, um, councilmember Skaphoni said, with our staff resources. But it's something that I would like to continue to focus on at some level. Um, so that's, that's just kind of where I'm coming from, like I said, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good, it's a good document, um, and it's very helpful.
And possibly, there could be like a volunteer who has experience, and if we had an event of some sort who had experience in those types of events.
Absolutely, and I think we could find a facilitator, yeah.
There's facilitators out there, yeah.
And I would highly recommend you have a facilitator, I think that's, um, critical. And it might be someone with USDA, they might want to come back and it might be something really worthwhile for them to look at, we, we get a lot of funding from USDA. Um, but yeah, I think, um, like I said, it But yeah, I think, like I said, it's it's not, it's not going anywhere. It's not, it can be on the slow train, but I think it still needs to be, you know, on the tracks.
Yeah, I think it's a great document, and I'm glad that it had so many people involved in it. And I think it would be a shame to not utilize all this information. Well, I think it needs to go back to the public to find whether or not we're still this document is still on track with what the public generally wants. Thirty years is a long time and things do shift. So because it, you know, since it was just, you know, developed all that time ago, I think it's important to make sure that the community is still in support of these ideas.
Well, that's why I want the commission to to have their looks at it as well, because they, to a certain extent, are representative of our public and they, you know, have that expertise, they have that commitment to coming forward and serving on our commissions. And I think they deserve the next look at this after us.
Well, most of them have already seen it.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. So I think they're they're working on it.
Oh, it's good. Then they can do it formally.
Formerly, it was, Mandy's already presented for me to a couple of the commissions, I think.
Okay. Well.
Yeah, so I think the idea of presenting it and then just dropping the ball isn't really the best way to go. I think using it, it is a working document. And I think continuing to update it and and move into the future with the ideas that we're here is what Mandy's talking about.
Right. And I'm just talking about making sure it gets in. We we do a big town hall before we say, okay, this is it. We're gonna take the next giant step.
Right. Yeah, that's what we were talking about. Like if we had all these different tables, like of representation of the different areas that are here and had public input. You know?
And the commissions also facilitate public input as well. So it's another opportunity through all those commissions for the public to engage in that process as well. It just gives a nice focus where it's, you know, public safety is focusing on their component, economic development. So it it synthesizes that process a bit.
That's what I was thinking, too, because, you know, we called it arts and culture. Now we have an arts and heritage commission. You know, park and rec can be more involved in the sports opportunities. I mean, it's, there's some very logical spots where our commissions can be useful. Okay, well, does that give direction enough to?
Well, do we open it up to the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have any other further questions there?
Nope.
Okay, I'm opening it up to the public now. Lisa? And then Lori, and then Julie.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lisa Hoover, and thank you, Mandy, for circulating the letter to the council folks. I appreciate that. And 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 I'm just gonna read little components of it, sort of back to this. And I think the Blue Lake Community Visioning and Strategic Plan of nineteen ninety seven was an interesting approach with a defined process and distinct phases. The vision on page two was an important component of foundation of document resulting from consecutive Blue Lake Community brainstorming sessions. And I just want to add a little footnote, not just one town hall meeting, but there were consecutive meetings. And that's why it had some structure to it. It wasn't just table with people writing down stuff. So I appreciated that from this document is that it was sessions. Given that the vision and strategic plan hereafter referred to as the plan was based upon community input in nineteen ninety six and was and that was almost thirty years ago, I would like to present that such community engagement be fostered by the city again as a precedent to updating the plan. As presented in the agenda packet, it states that the updated document is being reviewed by the city's commissions and that their input and guidance are solicited. That's good. That's good. Yet there's no mention made of updating the community engagement, which should actually serve as a precedent to any further updates to the plan by the city staff or commissions. But I do understand from this meeting that there might be an order where it goes to the commissions and then to the public. But I think expecting the public to go to all these commission meetings, the town hall meetings and brainstorming sessions is a very different and more accessible venue for this kind of input so that you could talk to the the people from the planning commission and the parks and rec all at one place and hear from them. So I think it's a very different from just deferring to commission input. So in the spirit of the nineteen ninety seven plan and continuing forward, I would ask that the community needs survey, which was identified in the nineteen ninety seven plan, and some brainstorming sessions, not just one, be undertaken as a foundation for this updated plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lori?
Hi, I'm Lori Ponti. I actually really, I didn't know what Lisa was gonna say, and I concur. I think that her suggestions for a process, not just commissions. I appreciate that we got an update, a staff update, and it looks like there was a lot of work involved in that. I do appreciate that. But I, I do believe that, you know, this is big, and it was such a long time ago, nineteen ninety seven. I also lived here, had little kids, so I was probably not part of any of those meetings. But but I do think that more community engagement in addition to the commission input would be the most appropriate because there are people who don't go to these meetings who who obviously are not here tonight, who tried to zoom, and luckily I live close enough where I could just get my car and come down here. So I I would like to support Lisa's suggestion of adding additional community input along with commission input. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I'll play along, you guys.
Good.
Good. I'd like to get her with Lisa Peddaskan and also Lori. I know we have technical difficulties. I just had a people in our office. I'm so glad you guys didn't call me a minute ago. Payback is not the kind of backtrack item. I'm trying to help people agree. I've seen this a long time ago. I was pretty shocked, starting all around, seeing the document, then on our city webpage, you turned it for a while. So we have it kind of be like, oh, this is such a great thing. You try to throw up on it. It's a USDA grant. And also brought it to a meeting. It was shot right at the council, it shot at our decisions. This is quite a fact. It's a team work that's important. My theory of it is why? Why is this important? It's a grant. This is the advice that the government are giving with the NFT. That literally for here, you gotta dial the ball for them. I didn't. But the general plan needs help with this. We're helping on it. We'll be comments with this is granting anything here. It's worth looking at tonight. It's within our general plan. They just prepared the outreach. And I just feel like we're kind of off track getting a lot of resources and time on this other thing that if people don't know why we did it, like, say it's the grant, say it's for to get by to the update. Like, I just think it was more of a why? And we need to focus on our general plan update, okay? Do we have our data? Then says question even. So the update, so they could be focused to help we train them because it has to be in this inherently, you know that. It's written out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, so Mandy, you've already brought these, this document to some of the commissions. Is that why?
Yeah, so we introduced, we started introducing this document several months ago, mostly to economic development, just to be able to look at projects that the commission was was focusing on and efforts and to see how it aligned with what was in this plan and how, you know, our projects are trending forward. So we didn't, we haven't taken a a very defined approach to it. And but I think that's where it needs to start going. And the the Economic Development Commission was really excited to see this document and to start working through it. And like I said, I've talked, Gary and I have both talked about how it could be helpful for the planning commission as well, and what the process might look like. There's, like I said, there's an aspect of it for for everyone. Not everyone would be as deep into the document. I think EDC and Planning Commission are probably the two commissions that would have the most focus on this. But there's, you know, there's also some really fun ideas in here. And there's opportunity to build off of and and pivot from some of these as well as opportunities come forward. So, yeah, so I would, you know, we wanted to get it back to council. We wanted to get it updated. And so we weren't working from, you know, a a document that had stagnated. So that was the focus of updating the theme so that we were, you know, we could start building off of that. So we wanted to get the feedback tonight. If, you know, if this if this update looks okay, if you have recommendations for adding additional information or would, you know, like to see something different. But like I said, I was trying to, trying to get the document a little bit more current so that we're working from, you know, where we are today and not where we were in nineteen ninety seven. So that was kind of the the effort that we are going through.
So Julie brings up a good point about our general plan. So can you tell us anything about any plans to update our general plan?
Gary Reese would be the best one to talk to to get an update about a general plan update. I can tell you, it is a very extensive process. It probably could close, come close to a million dollars to update a general plan. The city had does, has been updating elements of the general plan consistently, and that is well within the allowance for a general plan update is to, you have your core elements, your land use elements, your safety elements. Looks like Gary, Gary is really the the guru on on all of that. But the city has been updating those elements. But to do a comprehensive general plan update is a very large undertaking that the city has never really had the resources to be able to do. The elements are consistent with the general plan that we currently have. So even though it's old, not a lot has changed in Blue Lake, honestly. So a lot of those core elements are still very relevant. So it's really the elements of the plan that are have had the most focus over the years, including the process that we went through for the Powers Creek District. So I know Gary would be love to come and give you an update on general plans. This is what he has. So but I can tell you, it's a very, very extensive and very, very costly process to go through. And it's just something that the city has not had the resources to undergo comprehensively.
Well, understanding that, it seems like we do spend a lot of money on different parts and pieces. But we really don't have a comprehensive idea of how it all fits together because
We have a general plan. The city has a general plan.
But none of us is spending time in the general plan looking to see how all of the parts and pieces that are being updated are fitting in with the old parts and what needs to get done. So it seems like, you know, a presentation with our planner, maybe in order to take a look at that and decide what, if any, resources we want to put into that.
Sure.
You know, I mean, it seems like, you know, if if we're if we're able to to devote resources to something like this document, we need to look at our general plan, too.
And I think it would be very helpful for you to get some education on the gen- what a general plan is, because I think there is some misconception
There may be. Yeah, there may be, but that's something that we need to get clear on.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful for everyone to have that presentation.
So what what I think I would like to see is the commissions look at this. And then maybe, you know, separately at meetings, a spokesperson from each commission come to us and give us some kind of a overview of how they're seeing that aspect. For instance, the Arts and Heritage Commission might want to, you know, take just the arts and culture area, kind of focus on that, and then report to us as to what's their synthesis of, you know, where we are and where we're going. And I don't think that public safety is really addressed that much in the document. But definitely planning and parks and rec, you know, if there's some directions there. And then economic development. Because back in nineteen ninety seven, too, we were at that pivotal point where, as you pointed out, we were going from a logging town to what? We didn't know. And jobs were, was a really big concern back then. You know, where can, where can we work? How can we work in Blue Lake? And, you know, it's pretty much always been a bedroom community where people sleep and they go somewhere else to work. But there was really a need back in nineteen ninety seven, I know, to have some jobs here locally. So that was what drove a lot of that. And I think now we're looking at more accepting the fact that we're not going to be this big mega town of jobs. But we have other ways of bringing people into town. And recreation is one of the focuses I, I think is really good.
It's just a phone number. I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. We, we have a public comment. Would, could you identify yourself, please? Thank you. Okay, any further comments back to council? This was pretty much a discussion only and direction. Okay.
Yeah, and I would like to to take into consideration people's ideas of having more than one kind of a meeting, you know, like at the at the Grange, let's say, have a series of, you know, people's, the community coming in and giving their ideas for what they would want in the different categories that we have.
It could be separated out that way, too. By categories or something, by domain.
Or just doing three Saturdays in a row. Someone's not available on Saturday. They're not missing out on anything by attending the next.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, just like that.
Yeah.
Do you need more?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right.
Okay, we will then move on to item twelve, discussion regarding retail cannabis operation in the city of Blue Lake and potential changes to the city's cannabis ordinance discussion and direction. Councilmember McKay has expressed or requested that a discussion item be added to the agenda to discuss potential revisions to the city's marijuana cultivation ordinance in order to support retail sales. Currently, the city's ordinance does not allow retail sales of cannabis products. And an amendment to the ordinance would need to take place in order to facilitate retail sales. When the city adopted the ordinance, there were discussions regarding future amendments to allow retail sales. The community did not express a large amount of support for commercial production, but did express interest in smaller scale retail operations at a future date. We did actually send out a survey of people. And it was overwhelming that they did at the time, the citizens did not want any commercial production on cannabis.
When was this ordinance, though? Two thousand seventeen? Seventeen, okay. Was it? That's what I was wondering.
Yes, September twenty seventeen.
Yeah, it was right before the November seventeen election when marijuana was legalized in the state of California. And what we did at the time, we tried to be foresightful about things. And so we, we could see that it was going to pass. And so we made the decision at that point that we were going to allow for private cultivation. And we have a set of sort of rules about that, but that we did not, after we had gotten our survey and saw how overwhelming the people were against a a production of cannabis, that we wouldn't go in that direction. So that's kind of a starting off point.
Right. Yeah. So well, the reason I brought this up was because I think that the city could use it more of a tax base. And and if we're moving forward with cannabis being legal, I'm not sure, you know, I don't know a lot about these things, but I think that that like cafes or, you know, I don't know if we can limit, I was thinking allowing one or two, two, really, two, because, you know, they can compete. But no more than that in, within the city limits of somebody who's either just selling it, not growing it here at all, but of somebody who's either just selling it, not growing it here at all, but just retail here. Either as a cafe style or like a dispensary, something like that. That's what I was thinking. For taxes purposes, because the city needs money. Very practical reasoning here.
Yeah, and the
Yeah, and I think there's people in this town who, you know, have to drive other places to get it when they could just like walk. If, if it were viable, I'm not sure if there's enough people to support it or anything, but yeah, it was just my thought was like, maybe we should consider it. If somebody, then if somebody wanted to have a retail business here, they could. Right now, they can't.
Right.
So, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and then the, the thinking too back then was that Arcata was really moving into that realm quite a bit with their business park. And so we were opening our business park up to other uh, businesses.
Yeah, which is fine.
Necessarily has not happened.
No, yeah, we need some business here.
I think one of the things too that I that um, would make me feel uh, what's not the word, I'm not safer, that's not the right word. But in order to enter a dispensary, you have to show a valid license. It gets scanned, it gets tracked. I mean, it's very regulated.
Right.
And so from that perspective, you know, there's a little bit of kind of built in um, there's a bit of a built in safety net. And then oftentimes, you know, there's that, that person there is the gatekeepers so that you don't necessarily have things like, you know, thefts and, and that kind of thing. And you know, because that's, I think always that's, that's kind of one of the concerns is like, oh, it's going to bring in this, you know, maybe element of increased theft, right? But um, I, there, I mean, I know that dispensaries are required to have that, that gatekeeper there. And they, that gatekeeper tracks all licenses, you know, through a state database. And it's, it's, so I, from that perspective, it would make me feel comfortable, you know, um, with, with, you know, amending the ordinance or having even conversations with the community about amending the ordinance.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, the outdoor cultivation prohibited, the reason we came up with that is we had a council person at the time that was very sensitive to the smell of marijuana. And she said if someone was growing it in the neighborhood next to her, she wouldn't want that to happen because she would smell it and it would be.
I don't think we're talking about growing.
Yeah, we're talking about only opening up the idea of a retail for tax purposes.
Okay.
For the city.
Right, so. So what are you, so what section are you looking at that, at? Because um, we just talked mostly about.
This doesn't have anything in here.
Yeah.
About dispense or about retail.
Right, yeah, it's true.
Yeah.
So it might fall under nine point two four point zero five zero, the commercial um, activity.
Star, yeah, right, that's where I put a star.
Which is where, and here it says.
In order to eliminate the potential nuisance and health and safety impacts to the greatest extent possible, it shall be unlawful for any person or entity to engage in commercial marijuana activity within the city of Blue Lake.
Right, that's where it would be, yeah. Commercial marijuana activity, so.
Right.
So that would mean retail.
Yes, yes.
Versus production, we, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't touch the production, we wouldn't touch the cultivation. We would just touch this section in such a way to allow. And, and I don't know if you can allow up to two or something like that, you know.
Was it like a liquor license?
I believe you can. I believe you can set a number.
Oh.
So what I would recommend, um, that's great, is that staff do some research on this for you. And there's um, plenty of um, city ordinances that we can look at now that this has been going on for a number of years. I do specifically remember when we were going through this process, there was the talk that in the future, the city could entertain some type of uh, retail activity. Um, I was a big opponent of any type of commercial cultivation. Um, one, because I really felt that there was going to be a, a huge equalization in the industry. And I really didn't feel that the city had the financial capacity to gamble on, on cannabis. And two, the initial investment in the regulation of cannabis um, production and cultivation and sales in the community was, it was a pretty steep climb. Um, there's a lot that has to go into track and trace programs permitting inspections. And it was just well beyond our capacity. So we were kind of in a position to say like, you know what, we're not against it, but just do it over there. And you know, we'll do, we're going to do our thing here. And, but we're not, you know, taking a position necessarily that we're against um, cannabis. So I do believe that there is opportunity to um, to limit the number of uh, permits that you would issue. I do want to look a little bit further though into what the city's requirements would be for all of those regulatory um, regulations that we would have to, to implement and just to look at what those costs, associated costs might be. Um, and it may be that on the retail side, it's a lot less than commercial retail um, or cultivation plus retail. Um, that could possibly be segregated out now. Um, so I think there's a few things to look at and staff can do some of that research for you and bring you back some information or maybe find some language that might be more palatable and might fit a little bit better within our community.
And if I feel too that the city of Eureka, just because I've seen their um, agendas, they, the city of Eureka, if I'm interpreting it correctly, they have to approve every dispensary that. So there's this whole, there's this whole application process.
Right.
And so that still leaves the discretion of, you know, the number of dispensaries, the number of retails or whatnot to, you know, in that instance, it, it's still, there's still city oversight.
So that was written into their ordinance as well.
Well, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a state mandate, I just, or if it's a city ordinance, I don't know that. I've just, in looking at their agendas, um, I know that they do have, every once in a while, those do pop up on their agenda.
And I know our city attorneys are, are well versed in this arena. I'm sure uh, Ryan really quickly could give us some parameters that might be more manageable for a city of our size.
I think it's worth mentioning that there's a lot of dispensaries that are going out of business. You know, there was a big rush at the beginning, a lot of places opened and a lot of them aren't surviving, so um, you know. Well, that's up to the business person, right? You know, I mean, if we can allow the business to come here. Right, but if we allow, if we allow too many and neither can survive. None can survive, you know, so I'm saying, just saying, maybe Blue Lake can support one. But I, I wouldn't expect that Blue Lake could support more than one. Just personally. Well, that's up to the people. I mean, if you look around, if you look around at the businesses that exist in Blue Lake, there's, you know, there's very few of them. And there's certainly not any that compete with each other that are surviving. So I think that we need to keep that in mind. If we're gonna, if we're gonna bring, you know, if we're gonna allow retail, we need to do it in a way that is going to support that, that um, business and, and give it a, a good chance at surviving.
Yeah, definitely.
So are there such things as cafes?
Yeah, there's one in Eureka on Broadway.
Right.
And there's another one too, someplace.
I think there's one in Old Town.
Old Town, that's right.
I love that idea. I think it's like the Lager Bar in Mad River Brew, but What? They can't serve food?
No, we need to serve.
Yes, yeah, that would be good.
So people stay.
Yeah. I would love to direct staff to um, look into this and see, you know, how we could limit it, one thing. Because definitely, we don't want on every corner, but yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna open it to public.
Yes, I, yeah, I've seen hands raised too, so um, would the public like to make any remarks on this item?
Marty.
Marty. And then Lori, and then the two hands that are on Zoom.
Marty Granger. I'm just hearing you deciding this. Well, why don't you just put out another survey to the community and see if they would like this, since it was so strongly opposed seven years ago. Pass the community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Lori?
Lori Ponte, um, so I guess in the um, ordinance that's written, um, is the city no longer interested in eliminating the potential nuisance and health and safety impacts to the greatest extent possible to the residents of Blue Lake? That's a question. And then other than our um, city council person, are there other people asking the city to open dispensaries? Is there a vendor asking to um, have a space to sell? There are seven online dispensaries in Arcata. There are two in McKinleyville. I'm guessing that people who go out of Blue Lake to buy much of anything, unless they only go to Murphy's, are probably going to Arcata or McKinleyville, which I do, um, to buy other things and probably stop when they need to or want to add a dispensary and buy you know, what they want to buy. I am not supportive of uh, a retail cultivation, any kind of marijuana access within the city of Blue Lake. I just don't think it's appropriate. I don't think we need it. We're a very small town. Um, Trinidad does not have any dispensaries. Fortuna, which is much larger than us, doesn't have any dispensaries. Lolita doesn't. They have other retail sources, and I get that. And I know that Blue Lake is hurting for um, taxable income. So there's no question about that. But there's also um, something I found at the Department of Cannabis Control for the state of California. And forty-four percent of cities and counties in California allow cannabis business. Fifty-six percent of cities and counties do not allow any type of cannabis business. And sixty percent of cities and counties in the state do not allow any retail cannabis businesses. So if Trinidad and Lolita, which is probably closer in size than we are in population, and Fortuna are getting the residents that, that want to purchase and go to retail um, establishments, go to Riodell, they go to Eureka, some may go to Arcata, I don't see the need for this type of retail business needing to be adopted and added to um, to Blue Lake. I, I just don't see it. I don't see the support of it. I don't, you know, I, I just don't see it. So I, I would like a real strong argument against it, other than we need retail income.
Thank you. Kent Sawatsky?
Come in, Ken.
Kent Sawatsky. I hope you can hear me. I cannot hear any of the conversation going on. I approached uh, your manager, the manager of, of Manny Wager. And I just, well, I'd like to put in a uh, a uh, update between the secondary. And it was nothing that was T H P, you know, high, high intensity, it's a medicine part. And I was told that was not anything that was, should be within the revenue at that time. Exactly how the management and it, whenever I told them that would have a small amount of P H P to, to activate the, the chemo like it could be, probably was supposed to produce the coin subset or more uh, tech. And the business plan I have there was probably just created a hundred or two hundred dollars on a weekly for the mining revenues from sales cap. It's, it's just, to be, to be, it's, it's a, it's a generous thing, if, if you ever were considering actually doing something regarding uh, what is uh, a chemo like great. If my, my business plan was slightly crowded, I have people I could, I could really go mad in a heartbeat, so they come out and go you know, proper barbie, you know, they're technically leaving. And uh, I wonder if you're shutting down, the dispensaries are, were overloaded. A lot of them are going to go to the next year here. Uh, so A R X, I find it interesting conversation. So the amount of people we have here, it feels that the market will be pretty well online. We won't be going to a uh, dispensary first day. So uh, it just, it just isn't uh, and it's unfortunate that uh, that time, four years ago, that wouldn't be considered, I'm, I'm considering something now. Just uh, I already talked to you, so as far as opening different sort of doors, if you're gonna open up, I'd be the first one to try and go down that technical field, regardless of that, that's uh, the high P H P.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you. But we're gonna have some uh, points that kind of meet up with each other. Have you agreed?
What happened?
I can see on my screen, sorry. Is that what I, I can use one now? Okay. Did you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for being patient with technology, work, U T H R, and um, I'm gonna get back to the task. That's a huge thing. The reason I kind of engaged with state, it moves up the market. And they gave us a good permit, I'm sure we can, as you know, I think location rules that you think are important though. So, did children, I know a lot of people, this country taught, we were kids, and people like, you know, that's the only stuff that they let me know. Like, we could all be placed about in our priorities. And given for it spoke, I had some thought that wrote down, and I would have too, like, we would have acquired politicians. So I have a little fear of why now there's like special gift or request or something maybe. Uh, and we do kind of already revolve around, you know, about like price, like coverage location and special events. Now we have like a cake and dough habit, and we're just kind of having her imprint to the driver, the C R. And you know, reviewing the A R X thing and businesses in there, like a little review on that to bring back. Like tonight would be great, if there are no things, but there was like three and four, like what exactly they have. And maybe there's a little bit of C R, we're going to be differently about reviewing. And I know we need some tech review and, and I look like, that one time it told me there was something online, maybe we can get them thoroughly going around, like what if people are online? That maybe we could like, give those things to my hair and call that app, you know, give that all the shooting that I think maybe one day it's just, let everybody mine online, are we all kind of anything up? It's like something to focus on a nice difference with somebody, this is all. Thanks guys.
Thank you, Julie.
So that's interesting. When we buy things online, aren't we paying the sales tax for where it's delivered?
There, yes, for, it, it depends. There's, there's some flexibility in it and it's but for the most part, yes. And you'll start seeing, um, I know on my online purchases now, I'm starting to see our district tax and stuff being applied.
I have to add seven point seven five.
Plus the one percent. And the one percent for Blue Lake.
One percent for Blue Lake, wow, okay. There you go. Um, all right, uh, what is the pleasure of the council?
Well, obviously, I'm interested.
Yeah. I'm councilperson.
But the rest of you can have your opinion.
No, I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what um, what the city attorney has to say, um, and maybe. No, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what, what the city attorney has to say and maybe look at, look at, I don't know if there's any way to determine, you know, the success rate of dispensaries in the area. I don't know, but I think it would be interesting to get the attorney's perspective on all of this.
Yeah, and I would like to look at the limiting option, you know, if we can do a limit.
And ultimately, what you're doing is you're just allowing for something to happen if the economic, you know, situation.
Climate.
Climate was, was there. You're not saying that.
To put in there, if there is, as what Angela is saying with Eureka City, that each applicant has to come to the city council. And someone mentioned something about, well, we did this in 2017. Well, councils change. Things change. You just never know what's going to happen. So what happened?
And there were a lot of unknowns in 2017 as well.
We didn't want to wind up with a bunch of buildings full of pot growing. Yeah, yeah, empty buildings now. I mean, Riodell did embrace it, and now they're seeing, you know, that it's, it's
Some people are being responsible about it and some aren't, but the production of it, we definitely didn't want because of the safety factor of things blowing up.
Well, the price dropped incredibly.
Getting, getting information is a commitment to anything. It's simply information.
Getting information is a good idea. And the, the point was brought up that before any decision would be made, that the, that the community be surveyed again.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, we could do that. We could limit it to the retail idea, since clearly we don't want the production.
Well, but this, maybe the citizens feel differently. Who knows?
Well, we could add that.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I would doubt it.
With the city of Blue Lake? No, what we did was we, it was a ballot in November of 2017 for the state. But what we did in September was looking ahead and seeing that that was happening. We sent out a survey, you know, I think it was folded with, with our water bill or something. It was sent out to all the water customers, because we have that information. And then we got a pretty good, a pretty good return, I thought.
Which might happen again.
Which might happen again, because it was of a lot of interest and it came.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know about how putting it on a ballot. I don't know.
I mean.
No, I don't know.
Before it could, yes, all those who vote.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep. Well, anything on the ballot is either creating or approving or dis, or, or disapproving of a law or an ordinance, right? I mean, if you put something on a ballot on the actual.
This is an ordinance changing an ordinance.
Well, this is amending it.
Potentially, we're getting information.
Potential, yeah. Information item.
Are we directing staff to just get information?
I'm coming later or change later.
Yeah, I think that's what.
I think so.
I think that's what we're doing. We're looking at that specific area of commercial marijuana activity prohibited and some information about that. And somebody mentioned Lolita, and Lolita is not an incorporated city, so.
And Fortuna does have dispensaries.
And Fortuna does have dispensaries.
Dispensaries.
So there was some misrepresentation there.
They do now.
Okay, direction to staff was that we are wanting some information concerning the retail aspects.
That's information. Thank you.
Just information at this point.
Yes, alright.
We're, we're skipping thirteen because it was something that's councilperson Edgar wanted on, and we will discuss it when he is back. Fourteen is Redwood Curtain Design Annual Contract. Councilmember Scafani has requested that a discussion action item be added to the March agenda regarding annual contract agreement for web design and development services with Flex Time Program. Is that the name of the business?
No, it's Redwood Curtain Designs.
Oh, Redwood Curtain Design, okay.
So about six months ago was when the general refresh of the website was launched. And for six months following, we had Flex Time, what, what Andy of Redwood Curtain Designs sells as Flex Time. So you pay for two, for two hours and you get four. It's a subscription, a monthly subscription, basically. And so during that time, he's done quite a lot of work on the website. And he's got a long list of things that still need to be done. And so I can read some of those items. So in the last five months, he's updating the news page layout, conserving screen space while making news articles display more news content. He's updated the font legibility across the entire website. He migrated all the historical meeting minutes and packets into the new calendaring system. He's migrating commission meeting minute archives to the individual commission pages, which were created during the initial refresh. He's refining the meeting agendas and minutes page to highlight city council archives. Organizing the agendas and minutes page to cleanly catalog over ten years worth of minutes. And things that still need to be done, image updates throughout the website, especially the headers, page headers, standardizing of various items such as fonts and colors, standardizing element, site elements such as headings, further ongoing user training. We're still, you know, having some hiccups in terms of how folks are are able to post and update things. Working with users to determine how they use the system and see if there are further improvements that can be made to fit their workflows. Software reviews and further performance improvements, media folder duplicate, de-duplication and reviewing abandoned files. So I think for a lot, along, a lot of years, the website was kind of a dumping ground and there's some stuff. You go in, you start, you start clicking on stuff and you're like, oh, look at that. And then you go back to find it later, like, I can't find it. It's kind of a treasure hunt. So Andy's done a really good job of cleaning some of that up, trying to make it a little more user friendly, a little more findable. And there is still work to be done. And hopefully, after a year, one of the nice things is if you subscribe for a year of Flex Time, you get one month for free. So normally for an hourly rate, he charges ninety dollars, but if we subscribe for a year, we'll be paying forty-one dollars, twenty-five cents an hour.
For how many hours?
That would be for forty-eight hours.
Do we need a budget amendment for something like this, Mandy, or can this be absorbed in our?
We can absorb this.
Under office needs or something like that administrative?
We can spread it through our I T line item.
I think currently what I'm hearing is people are liking it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been hearing good feedback from people.
Yeah. Right now, we're only paying him thirty dollars a month for hosting, which includes all the security and the patches and the monitoring, and that's, that's a heck of a deal. Because he puts a lot into that.
So this year would start?
It would start the beginning of April.
Okay. Well, and, okay, ends March thirty-first. Okay.
Right.
Any further questions or discussion from council? Anyone?
I'm sorry. I don't understand how much it's costing.
Okay, all right.
It would be a hundred and eighty dollars times eleven, eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred dollars for a year?
For a full year.
Uh huh. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know what? That's wrong now.
I was saying, that's a little bit as a month, as a month addition, yeah.
Nineteen eighty.
Yeah, yeah.
Nineteen plus nine eighty-eight, nineteen eighty, sorry.
Nineteen eighty.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's twelve months in a year.
Yep.
Right.
I got that part. I'm like, well, maybe there's one month free.
Yeah.
Didn't it say that somewhere?
Yes.
So.
Oh, twelve months.
You pay for a lot.
You get one month free.
Yeah.
So it's a lot. You get one month free.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, it'd be nineteen eighty for the year.
Alright, it's as clear as mud here. I'm opening this up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make a remark or address the council on this item? Seeing no hands or no comments, back to council for a decision.
So did we ask the city, how is it working for you guys?
I don't really interface with the website that much, so it would be, I guess, only the one.
It's going fine. I've talked to Andy, he may be helpful.
Okay, so this is a positive thing then, because you guys are going to be the ones doing it, right? We don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just don't use the website very much.
Well, and the citizens are using it. Yeah.
The citizen's not really on our end.
And part of, a, a big part of what was done initially and what's continuing to be refined is making it easier on staff. Before, there was lots of different places, like they'd have to go in and update the same thing in three different places because things were really fractured. And Andy's working hard to make sure that when they do something, they do it one time in one place. And then it populates to the various locations that it should. So.
I'm curious about when I was trying to look up a, a job that was here, I didn't find it under employment opportunities.
Right.
So I'm kind of curious.
And I called Andy, and I was able to update that with Andy on the phone in about two minutes. And what that was, is that was posted as a news item. And when you go in to post a news item, you have a bunch of different choices about how it's going to be viewed. And the, and the box that would have put it on the employment opportunities page hadn't been checked. So we were able to go in there and check that.
He's going to check all the boxes? Yeah, I mean, it's.
Whoever, whoever posts the item needs to be able, needs to, needs to learn how to do that, right? So if they don't, if they don't know how to make it go to the right place, then they call up Andy.
Okay.
And they spend however long on the phone with Andy. And that, and that's part of our Flex Time, you know,
Right.
hours that he's spending training and troubleshooting and that kind of thing. And I'm also available for staff to call me. You know, hey, I don't know how to do this, you know, and sometimes I do, and sometimes I don't.
And then you call Andy.
Wouldn't know if there was, if they were looking to see if there was anything.
Right. And that's incumbent on the user on our end to, to make sure that what we publish is displaying in the right places.
Yes.
And if it isn't, reach out to Andy, you know, hopefully it's not super time sensitive on a Friday night, but I think we've got most of those Friday night issues figured out. But, but you know, something like jobs, you know, if it didn't show up on the right spot on Tuesday, well, get in touch with Andy and figure it out on Wednesday. And we go from there.
Okay.
He's not a twenty-four hour business. He's kind of a one man show. So we kind of have to keep that in mind.
Okay, so we need a motion then to direct staff as appropriate. The contract, we have to, we have to sign with him?
Um, yeah, it's pretty informal kind of a contract, I think. He just, we just say yes, and he sends the invoice and we pay it. But it's not.
That, so we have to make a motion.
I don't know that we actually. authorize us to enter into a service agreement with Redwood Curtain Design, and we can go from there.
Okay, so move second. Alright, it's a motion by Angela Scholl, seconded by Elizabeth McKay, to direct staff to enter into a contract with Redwood Curtain Design for one year with one month free. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes. Council correspondent. This came to the city council from Justin. And I will read it from my phone. "We all wish we had more time. As some of you know, I lost my grandma last week. This was the last part of family that has kept me in Blue Lake. It is a long shot at best that I get to stay in Blue Lake now. I have been a part of the community off and on for most of my life. It wasn't until this last year that I got really involved. I would like to thank the council, city staff, the Chamber of Commerce, and the community for being so welcoming. I have lived here for years. I just wish I had taken the time to get to know you sooner. I am making plans for the worst while still hoping for the best. As such, I will be donating the recording equipment for meetings to the city. I just ask that if someone wishes to take over recording, you let them use the equipment. As for my sound system in Prash Hall, I am hoping that I will be allowed to come back and run it for the music that will come to the space. And also work out an agreement for the usage by staff for other events they may need the equipment for. For the community, I wish nothing but the best for every one of you. As a community and even as a country, I truly hope we can look past our petty differences. We may not always agree, but I can assure you, I have, if I have learned nothing else in life, it's that we always wish we had more time. More time to set things right, more time to get to know people, more time to get involved in the community we call home. Justin."
We need to find Justin a place to live. Just keep your eyes on him.
Indeed.
Is that the biggest issue is housing here? Okay. And I'm sorry about your grandma. I saw the ambulances out in front of your house that day, and I was hoping it wasn't what I thought, but it was. All right, is there any other correspondence, Amanda?
You, I think Lisa presented her item, so.
Okay, we got that as well. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. I need to pull the January twenty-third council minute, meeting, meeting minutes because of an issue on page five. So do we want to pass the warrants and dispersments?
I'll file that. Yep. Yes.
Okay, someone make a motion to pass warrants and dispersments. So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Scafani to approve the warrants and dispersments. Any further discussion from council? Public, back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes with one absent. All right, my issue with January twenty-third is on page five. Where it says in kind of the top there, consent agenda, October twenty twenty-three and November twenty twenty-three minutes. Motion to pull the October twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Okay. If there was a motion, there's no mention of who made the motion, who seconded, and what the vote was.
And what the year was.
Yeah. No, yeah, the year is wrong as well. You're right. The year should be twenty-three.
I did too. That was one.
Yeah, but you do need to say who, who motioned.
Yeah, so I don't know if you can go back and find that.
Let me.
That is the only thing I think we need to get.
What's the date of these meeting minutes?
October twenty twenty-three. Oh, these are the January.
Okay.
This is twenty twenty-three. Concerning with you.
But it goes back on the January.
Well, I had a, okay, so it's right here. It says McKay and Elise. We both had issues with it, so one of us probably did that motion.
Okay, on the consent.
Yeah, possibly. I just feel like it needs to be indicated.
I have motion to accept with additions and corrections McKay and Scholl. If we want to add that.
Oh, because we pulled it and then talked about it and made the corrections.
So if you want to add that, we could, if, if you want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could pass it with.
Yeah, we can pass it with that addition. Did anyone else have any issue with that?
And change October twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah. Okay, so then we can pass the minutes with that correction. Addition, so moved. Second, motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to approve the January twenty-three, twenty-third, twenty twenty-four minutes with those corrections and additions. Any further discussion from council? Public, back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes. Okay, we are now on reports of council and staff. We'll start with council. Did you go to any meetings? Elise.
I always go to the R C E A meeting, monthly. And all the, and all the Parks and Recs meetings are being canceled for lack of a quorum.
Maybe not now. Yeah, maybe not now.
Maybe not. And as far as R C E A goes, gosh, we have a, we always have a meeting two days after our meeting typically.
So it's really far away from our meeting. Yeah. See, that's different for me.
And we talk about a bunch of things that are just not that exciting. I mean, it's interesting, but to report and to come in here and say, oh, well, we talked about midterm reliability. Very exciting.
Yeah, I know.
It's not. So we're talking about, you know, energy procurement and meeting. meeting state requirements.
That's.
That was the, that was the community um, advisory committee that had that meeting, and that's a, that's a big hot button issue. For sure. Um, and I don't know, I mean, it just keeps getting recycled. It's, it's not, it's probably not gonna be an issue that's resolved in any short period of time. You know? And it's uh, you know, we, you may, you may or may not know all the finer points of it, but a lot of folks want, you know, are advocating for RCA to stop buying power
Yeah.
um, from Humboldt Sawmills Company, but if we don't buy it, somebody else will buy it. And and we're obligated, we're mandated by the state to have a certain percentage of a certain type of power and that, that purchase agreement allows us to, to um, to meet those requirements. And if we don't have, if we can't meet the requirement in that way, we have to go somewhere else and probably buy power at a higher price. Like right now, there's, there's like nowhere that you can buy power and meet those, to meet those requirements. And um, you know, so that's available now.
That should be in the newspaper, that wasn't brought up. That's a good point.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tough deal, because right now we're buying power that's not gonna be available for several years. We're buying power that um, is, is either, is not gonna be generated until twenty-twenty-seven. Um, and we're buying, we're, we're contracting with companies that are building battery storage facilities. So we're gonna be buying power, you know, power for generation, solar generation um, and battery storage um, power that um, won't be available for several years. And everybody is trying to meet all their um, obligations in terms of um, certain types of certificates um, for renewable power. And so it's extremely expensive. If you want to buy it now. So um, so anyway.
Interesting, yeah.
The biomass feeds into that whole equation and it's, you know, it's one of the reasons that um, that RCA can offer power to its customers at a lower rate than PG&E.
Thank you. Um, so my Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting on the fourteenth was canceled. And then I was out of town, so uh, Angela went to my Humboldt County Association of Governments meetings. I do want to report though that Elizabeth McKay and Mandy Maker and I went to the Measure Z uh, advisory committee meeting. Um, that was on Thursday, uh, March fourteenth. And um, we were one of many people that had applications for Measure Z money. We're asking for thirty-five thousand dollars to offset our cost of our sheriff. Um, so I made a s- a small speech and then Mandy Maker also made a a speech uh, asking for this and to my knowledge, they haven't made a decision yet. I think they will by the end of the month, is that what they kind of said?
Yeah, and then it goes to the Board of Supervisors for consideration as well.
But there were, like I said, a lot of people there with a lot of interesting uh, requests and it was interesting process. Um, it's very powerful in terms of the amount of money that they can, you know, dispense. So that was interesting.
So they, they had written about thirty thousand, right? But it's not, that's not, they didn't make that decision then?
Uh, no, we made it basically kind of through the first round of recommendations, but then those always still come back and um, they can, so I've had a where they've contacted us and asked us to revise again, um, so you just never quite know how it's gonna shake out.
Right.
Um, but yeah, so that was, and I know they had a meeting on Thursday um, last week and we hadn't been contacted to attend that, so I don't know if that's good or bad. Uh, but like I said, it goes through several layers of review and recommendation. Ultimately, the Board of Supervisors makes a decision.
Okay.
And at that process, I've seen that recommendation change drastically as well, so.
Well, let us know if we need to go to those meetings because we will if necessary, because I think it does make a statement when a mayor and a council person show up at those meetings, as well as our city manager. Okay, I'll defer to you, Angela.
Uh, can I just bring up really quickly? Um, it would be great to get someone who represents a little bit more of the Blue Lake area on the Measure Z Committee. Um, if you look at the composition of the committee, it's very influential and um, there isn't anyone really representing necessarily our area and having a Blue Lake resident on there would be um, really a, a good position for the city to at least have some advocacy. Um, other cities have it, um, other cities have it in multiple layers, so it's something to think about.
How many people are on the committee?
Here's the committee. It's Glenn Zeimer from the First District, Tammy Trent from Second District, she's the vice chair currently. Ginger Campbell, Campbell is the Third District Representative, which would be us if it goes by supervisors. Fourth District is Nickel, Nicholas Cole, Darcy Miller from the Fifth District, and then they have at-large people, Sue Long, Bob Bronckel, Sean Robertson is from the Fire Chiefs Association, William Hansel, the Sheriff's Office, Talen Titus, the alternate, and then they have a vacancy. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven people possibly go maybe on this. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it would be good to have somebody on there. Definitely.
Is anyone eligible, including people that hold office?
Um, I believe so, yes, because there are current city council members on that.
Is Sue Long still on Fortuna City Council?
She is not, but Tammy is. Tammy's the mayor.
Oh, okay. All right, um, okay, Angela?
Um, Reidak last night was canceled due to lack of a quorum. But um, at HCOG last week, when I um, was there um, as a proxy for Adeline, Natalie Arroyo uh, presented, um, basically she presented her master's thesis on um, perceptions of trail safety and had this um, uh, really kind of cool synopsis of her master's thesis was, which was that there are, um, you know, the people that she interviewed over the course of this year of her, of her um, research that there are overall um, perceptions that trails are safe and trails are valuable in communities. And so it was um, just kind of nice to hear, you know, her research and um, you know, how she went about conducting that research. And then after that, da-da-da-da-da, um, there is, so there was um, um, the Citizens Economic Resiliency uh, Task Force, I think it's Task Force CERT. And that has now changed to California Jobs First. Within California Jobs First, um, the Redwood Region Resilient, Inclusive, Sustainable Economic Group, which is RISE.
Acronyms.
Yeah, yeah, it's like.
For some education.
Hundred percent. Um, in essence, so RISE just received a fourteen million dollar grant, uh, planning grant um, for, to determine um, sustainability of businesses and um, and the ability to hire folks for those businesses. So it's basically a planning grant over the, between now and the end of twenty-twenty-seven. Um, the anticipation is that there will be more funds to implement um, what the planning grant has, has discovered, but it's um, one of the things that was kind of cool was um, HCOG has been asked to be um, a voting block member, um, which is really fantastic because our region only includes Delnort, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake County. Um, and right now Mendocino County is the only one who has a voting block member on RISE, so it'd be really great to get Humboldt in there to really have a strong voice for economic development and not only economic development, how that ties to being able to have local folks who are capable of doing those jobs, which ties in my job in education, so I'm like, this is like, I'm, I'm really stoked about this. So it's um, I'm really excited because um, we did pass um, uh, to have, to have um, Humboldt be a voting block member, so it was really cool. Um, oh, and then Natalie also mentioned that uh, the county hydrogen bus, um, which had to be built to very specific specs for Humboldt County um, is almost complete and the fueling station is almost complete, although I don't know where the fueling station plans to be. But um, it'll be kind of exciting to see the um, the hydrogen bus up and running. Uh, the only other meeting was the Chamber of Commerce meeting and really, you know, this is the time of the year when Annie and Mary Day really like takes on full precedent for a lot of what's going on. Um, it takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of organization from a lot of folks. And so that was a big component of the conversation. Um, the other conversation that um, is really be, has been um, a topic of a real, a really interesting topic, the last two meetings, is the sign at the roundabout. Um, and how to modernize that sign and repaint it. The sign actually sits on school property, so there was, there were original conversations about, well, can we advertise certain businesses like the brewery or Jewel Distillery or this, that, and the other thing? And you know, when we realized that it sits on school property, you can't really, you know, advertise alcohol on school property, so that became kind of a misnomer, so now it's really um, looking at, looking at the organizations and updating the organizations um, here in Blue Lake, but you know, really having strong conversations about painting it, um, getting, you know, more signs and um, just thin it up a bit.
Okay. All right, so I went to the uh, Blue Lake Economic Development one, and they talked about branding the gateway, um, using visual concepts uh, with NOAA. Gonna come up with some designs, um. Let's see, the town square is still has, you know, it's designs that uh, lighting, water, construction is uh, going to happen in the spring. They're gonna use a, a B and B for now because the bathroom is so expensive. So I think that's a great idea, we already have the bathroom in here. Um, uh, let's see, there's drop-in, so the um, drop-in basketball is gonna be happening. They were renting the bas- uh, the court to uh, NPA for a while. And so now they're gonna have drop-in basketball, pickleball, um, the karaoke series, teen dance, barn dance, fundraising, bike park. Um, so all of these things are going on. Um, in the courtyard, the people who are interested in the courtyard, what is their names again?
Eisner.
Eisner, thank you, I didn't write their name. They are thinking about a container type of design development possibly, if everything goes through. I know.
That's so cool.
Like commercial and some residential or something like that in that area. And there's a new architect, Garrett.
Mick Sorley.
Mick Sorley, thank you, can't read my own writing, it's a big blob. Uh, for the Botawatt area. And there'll be some updates soon. And the bike park, we're just waiting for the weather. Should have made it an underwater bike park. Um, let's see what else, Storyland is uh, doing uh, uh, the work on the other side. Where we're gonna subdivide some of that property over there, uh, across from Taylor Way in that other area away from where the uh, power plant is. Um, and they're working on that. And then there was Valentine's Bingo. How did Bingo go? Wasn't Bingo just the other night?
Saturday, yeah.
Yeah.
Really well.
That was the kinetic sculpture folk.
Yeah, they usually do a really good job, okay, I didn't make it.
I didn't make it either, but yeah, they.
Oh, that's good, okay.
It was a rainy night.
They always do a really good one.
Yeah.
Okay, so Annie and Mary Days uh, is gonna be seven fourteen. And if you wanna talk to, um, yep. Uh, if you want to be a vendor, Adeline's your person?
It's only my fortieth year.
Uh, let's see.
We don't have.
Oh, and the Blue Lake Visioning was sent out, they were all given a copy of that visioning to take home and peruse, look through, okay? Come up with some ideas about that.
Okay.
Um, I went to Willett's.
Oh, yeah. California Cities, how was it?
It was great, in fact, uh, Susan Seaman gave a really nice, uh, you probably saw the same thing.
She's a good speaker.
Yes, so on the California Jobs First, and there's a lot of money involved in that. Um, so they're looking for ideas. And uh, but the biggest thing really from uh, the League of Cities is this um, it's, it's, it's an initiative number twenty-one dash zero-zero-four-two-A-one, that's going to be on the November twenty-twenty-four ballot. And it, it's called the Taxpayer Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. But what they are calling it is the Taxpayer Deception Act. Um, because they really are fighting to oppose this. It is not good for cities. Um, so there's a lot of information and what I'd like to do about it is put it on next month's agenda, I think, to actually probably go over it and take a stance.
Stand, yeah.
We have the city uh, write a letter because um, they're really adamant that this is a bad idea for cities. It'll pretty much um, make it so that cities can't make decisions, everything would have to be two-thirds votes. For so many things, and so nothing would really happen, everybody would just kind of be locked up for years, decades. Yeah, um, Sarah was really adamant about uh, us talking about it, so I'd like to put that on the future. That's about it.
Thank you. Managers' report?
Yeah, so I didn't provide a written report this time, I'll provide a written report at the next meeting. Um, it just wasn't a, a lot um, to, to update on the, the projects I normally report on. I did want to give um, uh, let council know that we did receive, we were notified by Caltrans today that we did receive our CTC approval for Greenwood. So they told us to go ahead and get our bid packages ready to release. Um, so that's, I think, one point six million dollars, so that's really exciting. Um, I'm currently working on this O and M uh, funding application that you um, approved the resolution tonight. It's got a pretty quick turnaround. So um, I'm, I'm focusing on, on getting that completed. Um, we also submitted, um, last week, I submitted another grant application to HCOG that also had uh, unfortunately a quick turnaround, um, but I was able to get that off to um, fund possibly up to two mini roundabouts in the community and to um, complete some design, engineered designs so that we could look at uh, replicating that where appropriate. Um, we're moving ahead with the Storyland Master Planning and integrating that with um, working now with Garrett McSorley on the Botawatt project, which is um, coming along really nicely and they have a lot of the same vision and um, kind of enthusiasm for the overall district and just how those projects um, all kind of come together. So it's been nice to kind of get to the next level of that, to see um, more of a connection of spaces being proposed, which will eventually translate to a recommendation for a parcel subdivision. Um, so that's moving forward. Uh, Eisner's actually came into the office yesterday? Is it yesterday? And wanted to.
It was yesterday, Monday.
That's it?
Yesterday was Monday.
It's only Tuesday.
Oh, it's only Tuesday.
Oh, my gosh, I was thinking today's Wednesday.
It was yesterday.
Um.
Almost.
I guess yesterday, I don't know, they came in this week.
Getting closer to Wednesday every minute.
And they want to move ahead with the, uh, working with the city on um, the exclusive negotiating agreement, they read through it and didn't have any problems with it. In fact, Kenny brought it in, signed with a check for five thousand dollars for the deposit, and I was like, well, that's great, well, we're gonna hold this and bring it back to council. Um, so they're really excited to be moving forward and want to um, get to the point where um, they could get an agreement signed so they can start, you know, really vetting the project and talking about some options for um, moving forward and um, site cleanup and project details. And they're very excited about the concept of the Container Village, which if you haven't looked at um, what you can do with shipping containers, it's really amazing. Um, and I actually, it's interesting, because when they asked me if we would, uh, were interested, I said, that's crazy, I have a whole PowerPoint presentation on shipping container villages that we actually created for the City Corporation Yard about five years ago to look at options to um, to develop. And we thought at that time that it would really fit within the kind of the um, the atmosphere of the district with some of the industrial uses and then making that kind of a transition into future development. So um, they're really excited about that project and have some ideas about how they could start, um, you know, initially cleaning up the, the site, maybe starting with some um, some projects and some activities on the site um, that didn't require construction, so maybe some food truck events and things, just to kind of get some stuff going on the site as they're moving through a process to um, plan and design and get approvals and, and things. So that was some of uh, Kenny's thoughts, so that will be coming back to you as council. Um, you guys had put together a ad hoc to be able to negotiate the terms of the ENA. Um, and I guess luckily, they didn't have any problems with it and just said, we'll, we could just, we like it as it is, so we'd like to get to the point where we're, you know, um, finalizing that. And that ENA doesn't. And that ENA doesn't re, it doesn't um.
Bind us.
Right, um, to a sale, but it does hold the property and uh, it does mandate that you negotiate in good faith at that point, so, which is, I, I think that's the point where we're at. So um, I wanted to remind everyone that we do have the Truck Rock, Truck Route Walk on Thursday. Um, that'll be an opportunity to kind of walk the remaining route, kind of look at what's being proposed by the engineers. Um, ask some questions for, for um, staff and the designers. Gives us some good feedback as we're actually walking it with people and um, kind of seeing what people's um, uh, kind of reaction to some of the proposal is, so that is on Thursday.
Who are the designers of that?
Uh, that's SHN Engineering.
Is it ever gonna be um, an option to have that type of a event on a weekend where more people can participate?
Yeah, you know, we've had, it's kind of a catch twenty-two because we get the same thing with people on the weekend who say, oh, you have it on the weekend and we, you know, we didn't wanna use our weekend to go do this. And then you get people saying, well, you need to do it after work, and then people after work say, well, you know, I'm cooking dinner for the kids and I don't wanna do it. So it's, it's been a little bit up in the air, so we felt like, let's catch this. Um, but there will be additional opportunities for people to provide comments. Um, I believe they're gonna be bringing some design boards too, so as people are, you know, out in the community, if they have some comments, they can bring it in and um, and, and place those on the boards and kind of, you know, give some feedback. And there's always opportunities for people to contact City Hall as well. Um, but it's just really hard to find, I'm like, for myself personally, like, we're gone on the weekend, so we never can participate in stuff. You know, cause we've got baseball and different things. And so it's just, you know, it's, you, you capture one group, but you alienate another.
There's a sixty percent chance of rain on Thursday, three.
That's what.
I think it's at three o'clock.
Three o'clock, it starts at City Hall. Um, it might be a little late.
And I'm wondering also, um, so we're planning the next part of the Truck Route, but um, we don't have funding for that yet, correct?
We don't have funding for construction, but we have funding for the full design and engineering, and that's what we're working under right now. And then we'll take that, those plans, and then we'll submit for construction funding, just like we did on Greenwood, so same.
So how much funding do we have for the engineering and design?
Um, it's come in several phases. Um, we, our Phase One um, covered the initial uh, preliminary design. You get it in different phases. So you get it for preliminary design, um, initial engineering, environmental. And then you go on to full design engineering and then permitting. Um, so I wanna say it's a few hundred thousand for the full um, the full design and engineering as it's gone through its phases. And then the construction, Greenwood is one point six million dollars. And then Hatch, the uh, railroad to Hatchery would probably be similar.
Okay.
Um, and then our lateral bids for the lateral replacement that closes on the twenty-eighth as well. So we're now up against the timeframe for, you know, school will be getting out, bids have to close, construction has to happen. And so we're gonna be roping it all together, but um, and then the town square, we're working right now, we just submitted um, our, our engineering um, design and engineering uh, deposit to PG&E. So that's in play and we're now working with the contractor on a schedule to start construction. So that's all moving forward as well.
Thank you. Um, looking at the time and we have the financial reports here, I was wondering if this could be um, postponed to the next meeting. Um, and.
That kind of feeds right into another topic, which is our budget talks. We never did have a midterm budget review. Um, and our midterm is um, we're three months past our midterm. So, and we're getting ready to look at our budget for next year. So I'd like to make sure that we don't have our next year's budget at our last meeting, hope it's two days before our fiscal year ends. Um, and maybe we can have um, Scott do a presentation, cause I know a lot of us don't, we've spent quite a bit of time with the budget. But we're still not as well acquainted as I might like to be. Um, but I know that it's kind of a difficult um, thing to wrap your brain around and understand. And so maybe, I mean, are other council members interested in understanding it better? So that we can be more of a part of making decisions about it.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So maybe we could have a work session with Scott and, and learn more about, learn more about what it means and, and how to understand it.
So you're talking about a special meeting or?
Yeah, probably a special work session, a special budget work session, maybe next month. Where we can maybe look at, look at this most recent financial report. Um, and, and get some idea where we're going for next year.
Okay, so we're gonna um, postpone the financial report to the next meeting. We're kind of getting into future agenda items here, I think. Um, there's the tax issue that you brought up.
Um, yeah, the tax, protection and government.
There's the Eisner issue needs to be brought up.
And then Gary, about the general, yep, Gary.
Gary Reese, yeah.
The general plan, we can ask Gary to come. And that's our regular meeting of April twenty-third. We are gonna have a special meeting devoted just to uh, manager evaluation on April ninth.
Chris is available, he texted.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So that'll be at six thirty, if you can do the seventy-two hour notice, but it will just be that one item. For uh, study session.
Throw some notes on there now.
No, okay. Well, it has to be noticed as a public meeting. We'll open it up as a public meeting and then we'll go into closed session for the evaluation and then. Yeah.
Do we wanna think about having the, a financial budget work session then too?
I don't know that Scott will be available, so this is probably the worst time.
Oh, right, right, never mind.
Tax season.
Forget, forget I mentioned it.
He's a little bit of a basket case at this point.
Right, okay.
Feel a little bit of water. So is, is late April a possibility or?
Yeah, I'll talk with Scott about it and see what his availability is. Um, I believe he was thinking about coming in kind of mid-April. Um, to start looking at um, potential budget amendments. So I'll see if he's available for that meeting.
Awesome. Like the twenty-third?
Yeah, is that the?
That's our next.
I see a hand up. Is there a public comment concerning um, Julie, uh, concerning the managers' report?
I'm sorry, I was trying, I was trying to press the agenda, the agenda item.
Oh, okay, we're on that. Yes, it's appropriate.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I think it would be great that we have a review of our general plan. Um, I did it before, there are people, um, you can help them out, they get our, in our community commission. I think there is a lot of these people within it, maybe for this one session. And we're moving about, right, let's keep the conversation going for the school, okay? We're gonna have the bowl bouts, so feel like, oh, don't leave the bowl bouts in the middle of the parent's day, it's gonna be fun. Have a good night.
Thank you, Julie, you too. Okay, um.
She thought about, said something about bowl bouts before school gets out, like trials or something.
Okay. Um, but she did mention having the Gary Reese do the.
Yeah.
That's all.
We already put the on the.
Yeah, about future agenda, okay.
Do we have that on for April?
Yeah, April twenty-third. Okay, uh, we are in uh, item ten, adjourn.
Um, motion to. I'm thinking about this um, deal that's happening Thursday and thinking maybe we need a page on the website to help facilitate public input. Um, and I don't know how, I know I saw that announcement that that was happening. I don't remember where, I think I saw it on Facebook, right?
Yeah.
So Facebook, how is it on Fa, on the city um, Facebook?
On the city, it's on the community ones, and it's also, there's several um, posters all around town on all the boards.
Okay. Um, what do you guys think about having a page on the website that, that does that sort of thing? And, and um, and kind of solicits feedback and has lifestyle, probably. Yeah, has an interface to do that.
Right, I, yeah, it's just.
No, it's not a future, I mean, it's just a chat about, you know, it's just something that we would just say.
It's Thursday.
I don't mean for this exactly, I just mean for um, in general, like when we have something like this going on. You know, you pop up a page on, you know, the page on the website where we can, we can.
Well, that is an agenda item you're talking about. Can we talk about it next time? Cause you're not thinking we're gonna do it by tomorrow?
No, I'm just saying in general, I can ask Andy to work on it. I don't know if it, if it needs to be a.
No, it doesn't have to be an agenda item. You can just tell him we want it. Maybe he can get it off of Facebook, I don't know.
Well, I don't, I don't mean for this, it's too late for that one.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe with a feedback, kind of a, some sort of feedbacks, um.
Yeah.
You know, thing. And um, and the other thing I just wanted to bring up, we're getting a lot of, a lot of feedback that our Zoom um, technology isn't working. So, and I don't know how old this is exactly, but I know it's a few years old, this setup, right? Um, so maybe we need, maybe it's time to replace it.
I don't know. Has Zoom been updated?
Wasn't this the first time it wasn't working?
Yeah.
Well, we've had a lot of.
Is there something new? Is that a new laptop?
Well. That, well, that unit right there, well, we have some, somebody's saying something about it being a problem every meeting, I think. Um, we've had lots of meetings where it's a problem. So um, I'm just, I'm thinking that unit right there, which is the camera and the audio. Um, that's, that's pulling everything into Zoom, correct? Um, there's, there's nothing else going through Zoom.
It should sound like we need to.
I'm seeing years in the headlights.
And I think, I think that's the same piece we've had for years.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking tech updates, then maybe, or, you know, purchase updates, it needs to go onto the next agenda.
We will be working out ones over the next.
Mm-hmm.
Meeting sometime.
Okay.
But, but the audio for Zoom will be improving.
Perfect. Will it still go through that device?
No.
Okay.
She will be using the microphones that are in her.
Great, okay. All right, um.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth, okay, second by Angela Schell to adjourn. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All the favors say aye.
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 We're adjourned.